Okay, just about six o'clock and we're gonna get started with the program. On behalf of California Emergency Management Team One, I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming out tonight for a briefing on the status of the rim fire. Our team took over command of the fire on Wednesday, transitioning with the team from the southeast who was here during the very difficult days that you all experienced. What we want to do tonight is, we know that you've been living with smoke, you've seen the 80% containment, which sounds good, but then I know you've been seeing those big columns go up every other day, and we wanted you to know exactly what's going on, provide you a very detailed briefing on our operations to tie this big fire up. So, that's what we're here to do tonight. In a few minutes, Jerry McGowan, our incident commander, will be giving you that briefing. Jerry's from Toowomi County, right down the road here in Sonora. So, I want to point out a few people who are in the audience. Susan Skolski, the forest supervisor, is gonna do a welcoming here in just a minute, and she's right up front here. I know Kelly Martin from the National Park Service, I haven't seen her yet actually, I think she's just driving in. So, a long drive around from Yosemite, she'll be here to answer if you have any questions about the national park side of things. Also, I want to make you aware of two teams that have arrived to look ahead into the post-fire recovery. The Stanislas National Forest has brought in a team of experts called the Burned Area Emergency Response Team, and Todd Ellsworth is here, he's the team leader. Todd, I don't see you right off way in the back over there. So, they're gonna be around for several weeks assessing the post-fire conditions and determining if there's any emergency things that need to be done after the fire. The National Park Service has also brought in a bear team, and Chris Holbeck is in the back right here. They will be coordinating their efforts across the boundaries between the park and the forest. The Toowomi County Supervisor's Office, we had Randy Handlat and Carl, excuse me if I get your name wrong, Rodor, Rodifer, excuse me, and then Craig Pedro is here from Office of Emergency Services. So, if there's some questions related to the county and their emergency operations, we'll hand it over to those folks. Also, with CAL FIRE, we have Scott Freeman and Fred Lopez, who are over, this is Fred over here, and Scott's around somewhere. So, if we have CAL FIRE questions, they'll be available to answer those. Thanks. Okay, what we'd like to do, the way we'd like to run this is, we'll have the presentations, and Jerry will give you the overview after Susan speaks, and then hold your questions to afterwards, and then we will spend a lot of time trying to give you, get you the answers to the questions that you have. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Susan for opening comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a beautiful evening for a meeting, isn't it? Perfect weather. The reason why we wanted to have this meeting up the 108 corridor is because we know the last couple of days, this fire has been pumping a lot of smoke up the 108 corridor, which certainly has increased calls to various dispatch centers, with a lot of folks expressing concern over what is the fire doing? Is it outside the perimeter? Are we gonna have to be under advisory notification again? So, we really felt that by having it up here, we could help alleviate some folks' concerns, and also just let folks know what is the status of the fire? What is it doing? When it is pumping up smoke like that, and you can see a big column from a long ways away, is it cause for concern? Do we know what it's doing? Is it within the perimeter or not? So, we're gonna cover that for you tonight, hopefully alleviate some concerns over that. It certainly doesn't alleviate the smoke issue. I think we are all very, very tired of having to live in the smoke like we have been for the last few days, and, well, actually for the last several weeks, depending on where you live. So, Jerry McGowan will talk about what's happening with the smoke plume and other spots that we're getting out there, and then, like Richard said, we're gonna open it up for questions, and we have a variety of expertise here that should hopefully be able to answer your questions on all things rim fire. So, thank you very much for coming, we really, really appreciate it. Jerry's stuck in his chair.
Good evening, folks, can you all hear me?
Yep.
All right, good. Matt, here's a test. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm gonna give you a tour around the fire and talk about all the things that is current, not of the past, but what we currently have around the fire here. As we start out in here in this area here on Paper Cabin Ridge, this is all looking good in the sense of no heat, no smoke against the line. That's big. It's holding. So, as we come up into this area, into Wet Meadow and all that right here, and this is what we call, they took away my, I do fire linguineese, you know, where you call Division Delta Echo at Foxtrot, they don't have these on this map, and I got that in my mind here. So, I'm just gonna use geographics. So, up here on Paper Cabin Ridge, along here, and right in this corner here is called Wet Meadow, and all this, this area is looking very, very good in the sense that there's not heat. When I say very good, and I'm trying to describe this fire to you, paint that picture to you, one of the things is, is that this is all holding and looking very good. When you saw, how many saw the plume here a couple of days ago? Raise your hands, y'all saw it, I know. Kind of a rhetorical question, I get it. But you know what? That was here. That was a big, big area here. Some of my friends called that the donut hole, all that. That was about 10,000 acres out there. What we did a couple of nights ago, we took and used an aerial and dropped some ignition devices right up on these ridges right here, and that thing started backing off and getting away from this line here. We had a lot of spot fires in the last few days. As my PIO was talking, we took this fire on last Wednesday, and there was quite a few spot fires that the firefighters out there are doing a very, very good job, and picked all those up right up in here. We had to get this thing out of here, so what we did is we dropped the balls and all that kind of stuff on these ridge lines and let it work its way back down and get it away from the line. It worked. And the thing is, is the, yeah, hold that up. The thing is, is that, you know, this is still, it was like, people, even in fire camp, were kinda clapping in a sense, and at one time, this donut hole, like I say, 10,000 acres is a good piece of country. And the thing is, is they're still, it's still kinda here, and it's still working its way, so you still may see smoke, you still may see columns. So, keep that in mind, it's still working its way away from the line. My thing is to get it away from the line, get the wolf away from the door. So, up here, it's been holding, and it's been doing a very good job, and a lot of our firefighters are right in this area here. As we come across and we're working into this area, there's a whole string of roads and all this kinds of stuff, and they've been working hard on this area here, out towards Cherry Lake and trying to hold this on 3-0-1. A lot of that's holding, and then, there's a lot of steep, steep ground out there. Many of you people, I'm from this country also, and many of you people know how steep it is out there, and I'm assuming that many of you know that. So, they're out here and they're working out in this area. By the way, there's 33, currently, there's 3,300 firefighters on the line, or working on the fire, basically. Some of these guys, like myself, are in camp and listening to the radio and worrying about a bunch of other stuff. So, this is still working out here in Cherry Creek. The good thing about that is many people here in this county know, what do you got up here?
Rock.
Yeah, I'm banking on that. There's a lot of rock out there, and this thing is hitting some of that rock and we're using it. So, as we come back around Cherry Creek and we come out into this area, we've got, believe it or not, we've got a small team, a couple of small teams out there, four of them, four 10-person crews out there. But they're very, very effective, and what they're doing is a lot of tactics of tying stuff to rock to rock to rock and letting it come to there and get into the line so that, you know, where there's fuel, where there's stuff that'll be burning, that'll just, it can't go by the rock, and we're just tying them and using that rock as our lines. And that's working here. But, there's a lot of fire out there, too. So, as you come into, through Lake Eleanor and all that, you get back over here between Lake Eleanor and Hetchy-Hetchy, by the way, I flew this yesterday so I can talk very sound about where these things are. We were working helicopters over here and all that. Now, I gotta tell you something, it is very, very, very dry out here. This morning, the relative humidity, the amount of moisture's in the air and all that, this morning, at 0.60, when we were briefing the crews and all that, was 16%. That's low. You know, when you go, it can only get worse than there, you know? So, that's today, that's what happened today. The other part about that condition is the wind was starting out this morning, coming out from the southeast and blowing this way. The meteorologist tells us that this thing is gonna do a 360. It's gonna blow from here, it's gonna come from the south, it's gonna go from the southwest, it's gonna come from the west, it's gonna come from the northwest, north, and you kinda get my idea here, right? It's all the way around and blowing into everybody's face. So, the fire is getting a big test. You got a 250,000 acre fire. You got a fire that's, today, it's $96 million. So, that was just a sideline. As we come back around here, as most people know, the Hetchy-Hetchy reservoirs are very steep. We show black there, but I tell ya, the black is like using the lake, but there's still a lot of fire along the edge of this here. And in fact, as my operations people just got, were calling me, I was getting some updates as I was coming here, there's still some fire in here, and it's working down in here, and we're working some, we're getting resources up there to protect some of the structures and all that, and the power lines down here in this area here. Okay, so this is called, this is November and Papa is the kind of, what I would use, but this is basically, our idea is to hold this on the Tioga Road and go direct, stay right against the fire, and come up here and tie this back to the Tioga Road. That's the road that goes to White Wolf and all that, coming off of the Buck Meadows Road, they tell me not to use that, because most people know, but I'm thinking I'm talking to my local folks. So, it's going down to Big Oak Flat down there, the road going to White Wolf is the one that we're trying to hold. Currently, there are, as we speak, there's probably 20 spots that blew right over here in this corner here, and they're trying to pick those up. But the wind is in their face, it's very, very difficult, they can't fly helicopters in there because there's too much smoke. So, we're putting a whole bunch of resources, crews and engines and all that, right over here, and starting to make this a priority so we can try to pick this stuff up here. So, this is still, we're still coming around here, as we come back into Rain Flat, and we start working our way back towards the west, this is looking pretty good. In fact, we've been working with the county and working with a lot of cooperators and all that, the CAL 5 Forest Service, Park Service, all these folks, and they wanna get a lot of the folks back in their houses, get people back. We're currently working on getting people back into Aspen Meadows, we're currently working on getting people back into Evergreen, we have opened up the 120 road, we snagged it, we tried to make that all safe, everybody was working together to try to get those things back, so we're trying to get back to normal. You're probably tired of the fire.
I am.
Well, you got a little ways to go. That's the real deal, that's, you know, I'm telling the truth. Now, the other thing is, the other job is to start doing suppression, so, all this is looking good, and what we're trying to do is get this back in a condition to where, when do the rains come, right? You get a rain in September, then you get a rain in mid-October, I know for a fact, because if you look at Mount Elizabeth Weather, it'll tell you that about October 15th, you're gonna get a rain. I can guarantee, well, I don't wanna guarantee it, but I can tell you that you're likely to get some rain. But the thing, the point is, is to get this thing into a condition here, at least on those lines, that we don't get runoff and grills and all that kind of stuff, too. So, that's just as important. Susan Skolski, the forest supervisor, is my boss on a lot of this, and wants to get some of this stuff done. So, as the fire, when the fire, when everybody was working on the fire and the thing was a lot more active, I mean, you know, it was probably just a bunch of smoke here, they built this line up along here, and so we started on that today. Anybody know what happened today?
No.
Okay, I will tell you. Thank you. It's, we put a bunch of masticators up in this country and all this kinds of thing here, and we started working that with some dozers and trying to put that back into a condition to where it would stand rain and all that kinds of stuff, and we had dozer crews and masticators. But one of the transports started fire up there. Masticator chewed stuff up, it just kinda munches it up and all that kind of thing. It's just got some heads on it. So, you know, this is, I'm just laying on the line, that's what we did. We had about a four acre fire, got a whole bunch of assets, believe me, we've launched the aircraft, there's a whole bunch of folks going over there and picked up, picked up a four acre fire about right here, like we need one, right? I get it, but you know what? There was no ill intention of that, obviously, and all that stuff. Hit that very hard, and then it had another 200 by 200 spot from that thing. The point is, it's very, very dry out there. Very, very dry, 16% and all that. So, we're moving off of that, we stopped all that, and then, we still need to go back and do some rehab, and I think we're gonna get closer to the fire and start it here somewhere. So, again, the condition of this thing is not necessarily that we're still, you're gonna still see columns, you're gonna still see smoke and all that kind of stuff, a lot of this is getting interior. Some of the priority now is gonna be out here on the Tioga Road and trying to catch it, keep this thing back over to the west of Highway 120, the Tioga Road, and try to keep this thing in bay. We are working on these areas right here, is some of the highest concern right here. That is updated.
I'm sorry, I can't see red on red, so it's great for those who can, but could you also give some geographical?
This right here is some of our concern here. You can see my hand, I bet.
I bet you I can.
And then this, this here. And then this is where the spots are, right over here. I'm using technology, sorry. Do we open it? You wanna open it? Okay, this is usually the time when we open up some questions.
Is there a reason why you're only using hand lines on the western, on the eastern part there in Yosemite? And where are the locations of the giant trees that they're concerned about?
The sequoias?
Giant sequoias.
The Toowomi Grove is down, I gotta look at my friends from the park that come over here, and that's this right here, right, Gary? So, that's more into here, is where the?
We have the Merced Grove, Toowomi Grove, and the Rockefeller?
Get up here and point at it here, my man. I remember Gary walking around Yosemite National Park and also been here for a while. Okay. Down here along, I'll get oriented, Big Oak Flat Road, we have the Merced Grove of the large trees, big trees, and then we have the Toowomi Grove off of highway, or off of what everybody thinks 120 is, is Tioga Road. And then there's also the Rockefeller Grove of Sugar Pine. Those three have been protected well, and really very little fire got into that, and that's being patrolled right now and mopped up.
And why are we only using hand lines?
I got that. This here is, it's a good anchor right here, which we don't want, well, one, you're in the park, and you're kinda doing, and two, this is being very effective with the hand line.
Is there a restriction for mechanized equipment or something?
Well, yeah, there is. There's some, there's some criteria that.
Questions?
The question was, is there any, is there criteria or using dozers in the park? Yes. You know, and, but again, the hand line is being very effective on this, and the crews have been doing a very good job right here in that corner. You know, one thing I wanna do or say is, people in here, in some of this area, the fuels are so dry, and I challenged them because I don't really know the answer, but they've been stepping to stump holes, and they've been getting burned, and we've been flying them to Fresno, to a burn center. You know, yeah. And it's, and some of those, you can't tell on a lot of those, in the stump, when you got a lot of burn area, you don't know where you're stepping. So, they're going out there and trying to secure the line and mopping this area up, and they're getting hurt. So, we are taking our time and evaluating this thing and wanting to let it cook down, burn down and all that stuff, but a lot of heat is held in those stump holes. We got nine injuries to date, I own four. That's not good. So, yeah, we're working this, and we're holding this. Other questions, sir?
What percentage of the area inside the perimeter has burned?
Oh, in here. And the question was, what percentage of this area is burned? You know, when those bear guys get there, because they're way smarter than me about this and that estimate, now, I took my flight yesterday, I can tell you that, and, you know, you know when you're old, when you're telling these kids like, hey, I was here in 1987 and I was fighting the fire, and that was 27 years ago? It is not like 1987 fire. It didn't nuke it as much. There's a lot of mosaic in here, and I wouldn't pay the picture that this is pretty, by no means, and I don't mean to, but I can tell you, there's a lot of places that it's, it burned the underneath, but it didn't burn the trees, and then there's other places that, what I term as it nuked, you know, took a lot out, and you saw the columns, and you can only imagine the heat. So, but all in all, out of the 250,000 acres, there are places where there's still trees, there's live clumps of various of trees. Other questions, sir?
How effective are the airdrops if you have a heavy canopy?
Well, you know what? A lot of times, the airdrops that we're using now is using the type, are heavy helicopters, if the helicopters are using a lot of water, and they're very effective, and they can get down there and kinda hold right there and just drip, you know, almost point drop. So, very, very, we got 12 helicopters sitting on the deck right now, and we've been flying the heck out of them, to be honest with you. Sir?
Yes, the drones, are they still up?
Nope. Not, the drone was good, the drone.
The RPA.
The RPA, the drone was, they, on this fire, they used a drone to overlook some of the area and all that. When I got here, I think the drone did its time, I think it did its work prior to me getting here to where I didn't think that we really needed it at that time. So, it's gone. I can use helicopters and other assets, and I do not want my firefighters to bank on aircraft for their safety. I want them to have their own lookouts and all that stuff up there in the park. Other questions? Oh, Pam?
The helicopter water was such, the droplet of water was so effective, how come we didn't have 12 or 15 helicopters on cue at that point to stop the fire before it became this large?
At the very beginning?
When it started.
When it started.
We got air tankers and all that stuff, none of that was planned.
Okay, hang on, Jesus. Let me try to rephrase the question. The question was, is if the helicopters are so effective, if the helicopters are so effective, how come we didn't have a whole bunch of them at the start of the fire? Is that the question? I look at my friend, the, you want me to answer that? The availability of them. I can tell you that when this fire started on that Saturday, I was on the Clamath up north on a fire, using helicopters. I can tell you that there's some of my friends that were just south of me using helicopters. So, not all the helicopters were available because there was other fires that they were on and committed to. I don't know how many, when you ask, well, how many were available, I can't tell you that, I don't know that. But I can tell you that there were other incidents where the helicopters were being No, no, that guy back there.
I was wondering about how, to what extent is San Francisco cooperating with their watershed around Hetchy-Hetchy? I hear rumors that you're not allowed bulldozers or fire retardant, and even that you can't dip into the Hetchy-Hetchy reservoir, is any of that true?
There's some truth to that, but the question, the question was, is you can't use bulldozers near Hetchy-Hetchy, and there's some, what was the other part?
Retardant limitations.
And then dipping sites, or where you can dip, mostly, I would say, where can you dip and where you can and you're not. And some of my bosses in the park, you know, there's some areas here where we can dip. But you know what? I can dip if I need it, if I absolutely need it, and I need it like right now, and it's to protect firefighters or to protect structures, I can use it. I got the green light to do that.
How about bulldozers and fire retardant?
You aren't gonna use no bulldozer in this country. I can guarantee you that. It's not, it's not that type of country. So, I wouldn't be an advocate of that anyhow, even if it would let me.
Fire retardant?
Fire retardant, fire retardant is again, one of the things that we can't, I'm telling you, the helicopters are being very effective, but fire retardant is one that is not really, really wanted, but you could, you know, in times, I would have to ask permissions to do it.
Would that not have been a good question to ask, the permission to gain that in the beginning, even if it was dropped into the scenic wilderness of Toowomi River? Because if you go out there now, it's not very scenic.
Right. At the very beginning of the fire.
Where it started would've been a good spot.
Okay, hang on here. Backseat, I took this thing on Wednesday, you know, kind of a thing. You know what? I can't, some of that, you know what? And I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, you're hitting it with retardant here and there, I mean, some of the, some of the things, I don't know how many retardant planes were available and all that kind of stuff, the aircraft and all that. And I get the question, but I, you know, paint, I'll tell you this, retardant's not always the answer. You know, it's not, you gotta get boots on the ground to get there and to fight the fire.
You can't get hand crews into the country where that started.
Well, then you got, you got to at one time or another, because you're not, you're just gonna check that with the aircraft, I'll tell you that. Uh, but, yep, you.
My question's for Susan.
Oh, cool.
Susan, I went on your website today, I seen that you guys are listing the causes of this fire as a hunter. And my question is, what evidence do you have that it is a hunter?
Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I was not part of the investigation team. And when they have a full report, then that will become available. I don't know, I actually don't have any expertise in investigating fires. I don't even think we have anybody from law enforcement here that was a part of that. So, I'm sorry, we just, you know, our answer is always, it's under investigation, they released that piece of information a couple of days ago, and that's what we all know at this point.
Looking at your website, the origin of the fire is very remote and very hard to access, and my question is, did this hunter rappel from a helicopter to get where this thing started?
I don't, I can't answer that, I don't.
I've traveled that, that region numerous times. No one in their right mind is gonna go with a hunter.
It is very, very, very steep.
Very unlikely that it started by a hunter.
Mm-hmm.
Or a pilot.
Okay.
And I think the fact it's being blamed on a hunter is part of this little propaganda that could arrest. Just my opinion. That's right.
How many people actually go out to those parts of the woods and make a living out there and do anything?
What was the question?
Well, some folks don't believe that this fire could have been started by a hunter. And I can assure you that our investigators have no reason to find a cause other than a factual one. So, I, you know, I'm just gonna say, they're gonna do their best work, they're experts in fire investigation, they go and investigate every fire that we have on national forests, and that is their determination at this point.
The only person that may have been there may have been a potpourri, because they were the only ones that wanted to get that far from the roads, but I'm just saying, it is not a hunter. We're gonna have to pick somebody else to blame it on.
Thank you.
So, we can get compensated for all of our losses that we've had.
Sir?
Yes, on the bear team.
Yes, uh, on the bear team, you have representatives of the Miwok tribe on the bear team to establish whether Native American cultural resources were affected by the fire.
I just happen to work for the tribe, uh, here at Miwok. And I can assure you, there's going to probably be some people on there like, um, the Reba Fuller's and all those folks that'll be attached to the, to the team. She, I can assure you, if you know Reba Fuller, that she will be attached to the team. If you know her. I can guarantee that. So... What was the, what was, I'm sorry? What was the question? The question, I'm sorry. The question was, is if the, the, um, if the tribe, if the Miwok band of, uh, if the Miwok band of Indians would have some representation on, um, some of the bear team and, and rehab's and all that kind of thing. And I mentioned a person's name. I mentioned a friend of mine. I worked there. And I mentioned a friend of my, my, uh, that I work with, Reba Fuller, and told him, I guarantee you she would be involved. And if you know the lady, I would know that you would know that I would guarantee that. It was a good bet. Okay, another question, ma'am.
Yes, I'm wondering if any of the timber that's burning is going to salvage the whole jungle or...
Great question.
Destroy, if salvageable or will be served or something, they have to get out before it rots.
The question was whether or not any of the timber would be salvaged out of there before it rots. I can assure you, we are already thinking about what that putting together team, there are laws that we have to abide by. One is our National Environmental Policy Act, which is a procedural act before we can sell any timber. So we will go through that. We will push to make it as expedited as legally possible. And, um, we absolutely intend to look at, um, the whole watershed and see what might be salvageable and what might not be. There is a lot of really steep country like folks talked about over here and, um, you know, if the diameter of trees on those slopes are too small to pay for the ability to get them out, you know, we're, we're not going to salvage everywhere, but we're going to really try and do it where it makes sense in the timeframe that we have to be able to get it to the mill before it loses, uh, value.
One more question, sorry. Um, question is, are you going to, what procedures and, uh, methods are you going to use to prevent manzanita going into the burned areas?
Okay, that's probably a bear question. Can I bother Todd to come up? I know he was here. So bear is, um, our, our Burned Area Emergency Response, they changed their name a few years ago. I wanted to make sure I got it right. And that's exactly one of the things that they will work on in their next, probably two to four week assessment. Figuring out how you get seed ground, down on the ground, how quickly, you know, where are the important places to put that.
Hi, my name's Todd Ellsworth and I'll be heading up the Burned Area Emergency Response Team along with Chris Holbeck. Chris will be focused on the Park Service side of things. And, uh, my team will be more focused on the national forests and, uh, assets adjacent to the national forest. So Chris and I are basically, in fire language, will be working in a unified command and, uh, he'll be one branch and I'll be another, basically. But we'll be working together, sharing information, those kinds of things. So at the beginning of our evaluation, we're just kind of at the start of our evaluation. Basically, a few of us have shown up a little bit early and most of the team is going to show up tomorrow. And we're, we're using some infrared satellite information to, like Jerry was saying, you know, somebody asked what the mosaic of the fire is. We're kind of, some of it's covered, this part was covered in smoke, so we don't have a real accurate number of how many acres of burned, high, moderate and low. But we're going to get that pretty soon. So definitely, you know, we look at what, our main, one of our main objectives, our main objective is looking, evaluating what the risks are to life, safety and property. And secondary objective is what are the impacts, potential impacts to natural and cultural resources. So during our evaluation, we have a bunch of different treatments in our toolbox that we could use to help mitigate some of the risks. And we have a handout that explains some of that to the blue handout. So definitely seeding is one of the things that, that we'll be looking at during our evaluation.
Specifically, manzanita. What are you going to do about manzanita growing back in the burned areas?
So the question was, what are we going to do specifically looking at manzanita? To regenerate manzanita or?
Manzanita goes into burned areas and it's gasoline for future fires. As you learn from the control of fire, you have to keep the manzanita out of the burned areas. What are you going to do about it?
Okay. Um, I'm going to give that question to Susan. I think, I don't know, it's outside the realm of what I'm going to be looking at. Yeah.
And they give it to the fire guy.
You know what? You got a lot of manzanita in your car.
They get, you guys crack me up. Yeah, that's right. You got it now. A lot of that's natural here, right? I mean, it's, the bottom line is... We're back to manzanita. The gentleman here asked, um, what are you going to do about the manzanita after, you know, in the fire here? And what I'm saying is, is a lot of the, the, the natural regeneration is some manzanita. I don't know if they're going to be able to control it. I mean, you, you, it's, it's natural. It just, that's what's supposed to be here. All right, another question. All right, you.
Did you fly up 108 corridor when you flew?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. You asked me that question? How far out it is? Did it pass Miwok and going up? Are we kind of...
The fire? The question was, did everybody hear the question?
No.
Okay, okay, easy. The question is, is did I fly, did I fly over the, uh, the 108? No. I know where 108 is. The 108 is, you know, it's, you can see that right, right here. What I did is I flew along the fire line.
108 is right here. Roughly?
Roughly three miles away in a lot of places.
Thank you.
That's what I think you were wanting.
Yes, it was.
Oh, you.
Can you tell us what exactly is in fire retardant by percentage? And then the impact of that on waterways and forests?
Right. The, um, did you hear the question? No, I know. I'm kidding. Um, one of the things is, is that the question was, is what is in, what is the, basically, what is the chemical makeup of the retardant that, that the planes are dropping and, and what is that going to do to our waterways and all that kind of thing? So, I don't know all the things that are in the chemical makeup and some of my friends are going, oh, this will be a good answer. But there's, but it is a lot of organic materials and, and it has breakdown and, and, you know, a lot of what they say is that it's, it has nitrogen in it. So a lot of people think that it's like a fertilizer at the end and all that kind of stuff. I don't, to answer your question specifically, I don't know what, what, what are everything is in there. But I can tell you this, one of my, my, some of my direction is to keep, keep, uh, the retardant out of the waterways. Do not drop in the waterways and with, it's 300 feet, I believe. 300 feet away from the waterway. So that's, um, part of my direction is to keep it out of that.
Does anybody know what's in the fire retardant?
Yeah. All right, be nice, everybody.
It's very hard to find out what's in fire retardant and everybody's got a slightly different take on it.
We'll, we'll get, uh, one of my information officers here will get, get that information to you. You're welcome. That was actually Susan's idea, but yeah. Uh, you, ma'am, I think you had your hand up.
In regards to the wood that you guys can't get out to process at the mills, um, is there going to be a point when you guys let the locals in to start either dropping their, the wood themselves? Because nine out of 10 people that do wood cutting know how to drop their own trees? And when are we going to be allowed back in the woods in order to get our wood? Because that's our fuel up here. That's how we heat.
My expectation is that the closure is going to stay in place for a long time. Because we, our capacity to, to put down the hazard trees along those roads, we, there's lots and lots, hundreds and hundreds of miles of roads. And as we're able to open them, we're going to open the most heavily used ones first, you know? We did 120. You know, at some point we'll get to cottonwood and all those other roads, the paved ones, and then going into the, the lesser traveled roads. Um, once we can make them safe and allow people back in, as you know, you'll find plenty of wood available.
So normal wood cutting season ends November. Are you going to extend that to let, because again, a lot of people don't have their wood in and that's primary heat up here. So are you guys going to extend that November deadline so that people can go in, hopefully?
Yeah. Her question was whether or not we'll extend the November deadline for open wood cutting. And we're just going to have to evaluate that, um, over time. You know, one of the reasons that we end up closing is because what happens to the roads. And by then we'll have, uh, probably a couple of rainstorms on it. And depending on how successful our initial work is, which we hope is very successful, you know, there's roads that could be a big mess. But, you know, everything's different this year. We're going to have to, we're going to have to figure it out as we go, depending on what's happening from a, from the rain standpoint, the safety of the roads. And we certainly know a lot of people depend on wood for heat for the winter.
Thanks.
Is there going to be any kind of an impact? Every year we hear in Southern California, when a fire of this magnitude happens, they have mudslides and all kinds of other problems. Is there anything that we have to be concerned about?
I will, um, he was asking about, was there anything that we need to be concerned about after this fire with mudslides and, uh, events like that? Absolutely. And the bear team, I keep using the acronym, it's the Burned Area Emergency Response Team, that's here. And there's a lot of them. Probably the largest number in terms of team members that California has seen, because this is the largest fire, is going to be evaluating that and trying to, uh, put into practice things that will, will armor those things from, you know, having all those mudslides and debris flows into our creeks and everything. So it is a big project. You know, we're right up against time, hugely concerned how much time, Jerry's right. You know, we get a little sprinkle in September, but we often get a pretty heavy rainstorm in October. He says the 15th. I always think of it as the 20 something, but I hope I'm right, just, that is later this year. But yeah, there's, there's really huge concerns. A lot of people have... A lot of downstream effects in terms of hydroelectric, uh, you know, just the way people use the water. There's huge concerns.
What exactly was attributed to the magnitude of this fire? Was it lack of response or mismanagement of the forest?
Well, everybody's entitled to their opinion. Uh, the question, was it, uh, lack of response or mismanagement of the forest? I will say, uh, none of the above. Uh, you know, we... The Stanislaw Forest is a big forest. We work very, very hard to put in fuels treatment and timber sales across the forest every year. As you can imagine, just like your own budget, the budget of the forest is balanced with all the other forests within this region and all the other forests within the country. I will tell you that we have been successful in, in at least most of my years here of getting additional funding later in the year from not just the initial dispersment. Some of that, the county has been helpful in, in helping us get more money to do more work. But, um, you know, we're out there doing the best that we can. We've treated a bunch of this landscape. We have experts now looking at some of those treatments to see if they changed what the fire was doing. My, uh, gut feeling is we're going to find that it did. And, and by that I mean the intensity of the fire probably has dropped down and burned a little cooler through some of those treatments. But we've got folks working on that. And I know I saw one of the fellows here out from DC that's looking at that. And, uh, um, we'll see what the responses.
Second part of the question, how, how, I'm sure a lot of people have questions, so, okay. Um, how will the ranchers that lost their livestock, how will they be compensated? Or their lands? Or their timber?
I don't have the answer to that. We have some folks coming in this week that help with claims. And I, I really don't have any, any expertise in that. There are, some of those that are affected will be able to put in a claim. I, I really, anybody else know? Jerry, do you know? I don't either. I don't have that expertise.
Yes, sir. Uh, on the, on the fire management, I was here at the complex fire in 1987. They bring outsiders in that know nothing about the area, nothing. And they don't know where anything is. You can ask them questions. This is the same thing. Nice fellows, uh, good, good, uh, good managers probably, but know nothing about the area. My question is, why don't they use local loggers, SPI, private loggers, to work, to be in charge on the ground? Because they can tell them where, uh, where roads are, where, where places that are, uh, wide with no, uh, trees. These guys don't know. They just have the fence and there's some guys from Tennessee, North Carolina, Virginia out there running the crew. They have no clue. Been there with them this, this fire. And, uh, and, and in one example, Kevin Kalkowski, 34-year lumb, logger here, said he went to Pine Mountain Lake. They were grading a road, a, 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 a fire guard down to the river. He said, why don't you go over here? There's a road right over here. And he masticated it last year, so it's wider. So why don't you go over there? I know it's there. He said, it's there. You want to push dirt or do you want to go over there? That's what happens with the management from out of the country. These guys who know this country could shut, shut that fire off in many places. Some of them just say, well, we'll back up to this. I've talked to firefighters, firefighters, they say, we're just, they just manage people here. We're, we're trained to put fires out. They don't even want us to do that. It's very discouraging to see how some of this is operated from people in North Carolina or Tennessee, Mississippi, Florida, coming here to tell these people out of here. And they don't use the local people.
Why? Of course, my question, why?
Right. Okay, so you heard the question, right? So I will tell you this and I, I, I...
I'm from here.
But I will tell you that I was in Alaska not too long ago. I don't know anything about Alaska other than it doesn't make sense. It's ice underneath there and then there's some duff and then there's some tree. You know, but the, but, but good, good people, good teams will go grab the locals and get them, put them right beside them.
Then why didn't that happen on this?
Um, I think it did. I think it used some of them. I don't know how many and all that stuff. Again, I wasn't here on that kind of thing and I'm not going to backseat quarterback another team. But I tell you what, every time you go somewhere, you try to grab the locals and try to hold them, hold them tight to you. Because they know that country. They know some of the stuff.
Every CDF crew that we ran into out there said they were instructed to just protect structures. There's only five structures in the area where we were at. And every time it came to a road, they'd walk away. They didn't even try to stop it there. I was there.
Yeah, well...
Where were you?
I was up north.
Um, I don't know. I, you know, I, I can't backseat quarterback that. Okay, what's, what's up? Go ahead.
How big did that fire get in the first three days?
That I don't know either. I don't know how big the fire got in the last three days.
Did it start in an accessible place?
You know, the, here's the deal. On this since Wednesday, I got a whole, I got 3,300 firefighters out there right now. And some of them are getting hurt. I can answer for four of them. Keep that in mind and you better keep that in your hearts. On the onset of thing, I'm sure there's questions and all that kind of stuff. I can answer them like you, like you asked me. Where was it? North.
That wasn't towards you, Jerry. That was more towards the Forest Service.
Okay, well...
Because everybody that I talked to was instructed by the Forest Service not to. All they were doing were structures. They didn't, you know what I mean? Let it get as big as it can get.
Yeah, 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 I can't, whatever. I was not here. And I, and I don't know if Susan wasn't, Susan's a, go ahead.
There was a lot of them.
His, his, um, information was that the CAL FIRE engine folks were instructed only to protect the structures and nothing else. And I can tell you that our, our work with CAL FIRE has been shoulder to shoulder and we've been totally aligned in how we've been fighting this fire. I can also tell you that after every fire, there's a whole lot of other information out there and I, you, you... there, and I, you, you have heard it, you said...
We were there.
You were there.
No, Jerry, we were there.
So, I, I find that very disturbing and, um, not...
Exactly. He's gonna ask questions.
Well, disturbing, I don't, I don't believe that's a, that's an accurate statement. Um, if folks responded that way, a firefighter, then that's, then they were, they did not know what their direction was.
They were instructed to keep their mouths shut.
Okay, let's move on to another question. Because a lot of people have questions.
Are we in danger here? Is this fire coming this way?
Right now, the fire, like I was just giving an update here, this fire right here, this, this, this is, here you are here, right?
Right.
And this is looking very good. I gave that update, I don't know if you were here earlier, but this thing is looking pretty good. The firefighters have done a good job of, of hold, holding that, and there's very little smoke over on this side here. But, when you asked me specifically, "Am I in danger here?", I'm, I'm gonna say that, you know, there's always a risk. I'm not gonna just kinda carte blanche, going, "You're safe, don't worry about it." You know, I'm not gonna do that.
Thank you.
Um, yes, ma'am. She had her hand up first there.
I would just like to point out, with all this negative stuff going on right at the moment, that we're still here and we're not burned out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're not burned out? You can hear that, burned out, so this guy, big time. Big time burned up.
Right. It, um, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know how many firefighters were injured altogether? And are any of them injured seriously? And are hearts...
There are nine fighters, there's nine firefighters all over around the thing that got, that got injured. The ones, uh, and they range from, believe it or not, like, a bug in an ear, and the, you know, I mean, that, that has happened. And bee stings, bee stings are one. Heat exhaustion, but the one, like I was talking earlier, is that people are going into, falling into stump holes and getting burned. There was one guy that were, there was, there was one guy that was chipping, chipping some, working on the fire line, chipping, got a bunch of ash in his face and it burned part of his, his face. There was another individual that, uh, this is on my watch. And then, uh, then, uh, there was a big one where a guy went through a stump hole and came and, and has, uh, you know, burns to his butt. Sir?
One quick question for the, our, when the, when this is over, are you anticipating influx of Forest Service personnel to rehabilitate the fire? A large influx of personnel, and also through the Park Service?
You know, I think, uh, I, I'm expecting some amount of help. I don't know that it'll all be Forest Service. The Park Service has a team here as well. And I know we have other interested folks like Cal Fire and the Mewoc tribe, so my expectation is there'll be a lot of folks to help. And then we'll also be letting contracts as well to help, which would be private individuals.
It's a couple of people who were...
I forgot.
Okay, a few more questions, I'm gonna go home and eat dinner. Sir?
A lot of the large fire line were instructed, uh, are you, Forest Service planning on maintaining them for future breaks in terms of keeping fuel down and maintaining them as they fill with vectoring rate? Or are you letting them grow back naturally? One question. Let's go, big market bear.
In, uh, actually, that's my charge, is to put those back into suppression rehab, water barm, and all that kind of thing. And there are some pretty large ones out there that, um, that I would think. And I look at my, my, the FMO here and all that, I would think that they would use those as advantage points for further future uses. Sir?
Are you still lighting backfires on the northwest rim of Park Run that would affect us?
I'm done on the northwest end. We're, that, all this right here is, we're, we're done. Like I said, there was a 10, a 10,000 acre dono hole right here. We lit some of the aerial, uh, aerial interior, um, uh, ridge lines and all that, and let it back down and get it, get the lines away. I'm done with that.
More backfire?
I'm not gonna totally say that, but I'm done pretty much with that.
This was great.
Ma'am?
Along the lines of preparing forests, working to, you know, all the extor people that are coming in, would you be organizing ways for community people to volunteer and help to, to use the advantage of all the water here? And then a second question, if someone's lost their property or animals and other things, is there sort of a state of medical assistance that might supplement their own insurance or help as well?
So, the question was, um, is there some ability for folks to volunteer and help with some of the, maybe the reforestation, planting trees back and stuff like that? Yes, yes, we definitely would like to have some level of capacity there. Um, would love to have a community member step up and help, help us organize that, because a number of people have said that. And we really, really appreciate that. And, um, you know, everything from school groups to just community groups, and people that wanna reforest this fire, so that's great. Um, the second piece was, oh, uh, I think I answered that already. I, I'm not a claims person, and we have a claims person coming in this week to help. Uh, I think it's gonna meet with a couple of the ranchers on Thursday, I think, so I don't know if you've been notified on that yet, but...
Last question. Second, last question.
Logging group that went out to Deadwood, did 10 miles of fire line in, in four days, and then we were asked to leave. That's my comment. My question is, how much of this timber's gonna get tied up in court and just sit out there and rot?
Before locals can get in there.
So, he's from a, or was from an SPI crew that worked out there for four days? Four days, and then were asked, was asked to go home. How much of the timber will stay there to, I can't answer on the litigation standpoint, you know, it's...
Are you in disrepair?
It's premature to do that, because we don't know what it looks like. I mean, I've already had some contacts from a variety of groups that are willing to help us figure out what this salvage looks like. Some folks that you might not think would want to help us, but actually do, so, um, I don't know.
Why were they asked to go home?
That's a tactic, you know? I think they might have completed their work. I know the SPI dozer crew that was working was doing really, really great work, because I think they were working on some previous dozer lines that probably were in from other fires. Did I hear a yes out there? Somebody, maybe you know, factually? Um, maybe they were done, I don't know. I know they were doing great work, and we were tied in very closely with...
Sir, just a real quick comment. I was one of the first responders out there, and for what it's worth, a lot of the firemen, police officers, and everybody that came up here, said they fought fires all over the United States, have never come to a community with the support that Tooluma County showed them, with all the thank you signs, everything else. And all the firemen and all the law enforcement were asking us, local guys, "Where's an application? Because this is where I wanna come to live."
Oh, great.
Because if it wasn't for you guys, the public supporting us guys, or the guys out on the line, we couldn't have done what we did. So, a huge pat on your guys' back. I mean, yeah, those guys on the fire, I don't wanna be them. But again, you guys, there was so much food, like law enforcement, we'd get a lunch sack that has 5,000, 8,000 calories in it, um, because it's like the firefighting kind of thing. The, you couldn't go a half a mile without somebody coming up, trying to give us cookies or a cake or something to drink. So, the support by the community outweighs a whole lot. And like I say, a lot of people wanna know how to apply here and come live here, because they love the community, so...
I agree, we're very lucky to live here.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering about the, um, in our part of the woods, there is a lot of, uh, from the last fire, you know, the, the little trees, the plantations, how much do you figure it burned up?
You know, up here, when the, when the thing, up, uh, when you're talking like out here?
Yeah, because see what I'm getting at, Jerry? And I know you weren't here. The man, they just, they burnt, they burnt that all up on purpose, all these plantations.
They were talking about how much, uh, how much plantation was out there, uh, how much is left? Because there was a lot of firing that took out some of the plantations. And you know what? I, I flew more, I can only say that I flew out here and was taking a look at it. I don't know. I would, I mean, I wanna, I wanna go inside and look, but I don't know right now.
But you know, why, why put it back if it's gonna burn 20 years?
Well, I can tell you that when in 87, when I was here, and I hadn't seen the Groveland part, I was sitting over there, over here in Tooluma, and I was just, but in the Forest Service, I, I helped plant a lot of those trees out here in the Groveland area. And I'll say one thing, I was sure thankful that those plantations over here are still standing. You know, the ones in Smith Peak and all that kind of country, Moore Creek and all that, they're still there. And I felt grateful for that.
I wanna thank the Sheriff's Posse for their support for their animals.
There you go. You know, there was a bunch, I'll tell you what, there was a bunch of people at the, the Emergency Operations Center that did a really good job and cared a lot about you. I was there. I saw all those people working in the Sheriff's Department and, and EOC, the, the emerg- all those people, Animal Control, all of them did a heck of a job, really. And they were engaged. They were tired, but they were engaged. Okay, I'm, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to backtrack, but I, I just got off work and I came late. When I was here in 87, I lived in my house in 87, when the fire burned all the back of Mount Provo, and then in 90, the Cotton Fire that burned up and over Mount Provo. How far is the fire from Mount Provo?
The fire's, um...
What's the closest ridge it's burning on?
Sh, um, Paper Cabin Ridge and out by Duckwall. Thanks for asking that, that made it short. But thanks. You guys, I gotta go eat dinner. Okay, one more question.
I can piggyback on hers, because I lived near her. I just last night went up Mount Provo Road for the first time, because it's been closed off. And I have to say, there was a wonderful forester there who is down from another state who was invited back because she is native to our area, and did go and show people again. From her watch on, she's been wonderful. And, uh, my question is, at this point, it seemed like there was access to go down Cottonwood Road over to Duckwall, which had kind of active smoke going on? And my question is, hopefully, all those backroads that some of us have been around and know, there is some way to keep looky-loos out? Who could start up and mess around embers and get something else going?
The, the forest put a closure in, you can't go in there. And that's a good thing. You know, and one of the things is, is I don't wanna come out Basin Creek when I got fire trucks going down into that dang thing, you know? It's too tight. So, it's, that's a good thing.
And it is closed off?
Yes.
That's my question.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Well, you know what? We're, we're done. You know what? Thank you very much. One thing is, is that I, I, I thank you guys for coming, and there's a lot of questions and frustrations and all that kinds of stuff. And the thing, and I, and I don't wanna be rude to the people who stop questions, and I'll stay after a little bit for that, but for the main part of this, I wanna thank you for coming. But the number one thing is, don't forget the firefighters.